All right, good evening, everyone. I want to call the meeting of the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners for this April 12th, 2021 to order. And I'd like to welcome those who are in attendance in our audience this evening, as well as those who are joining us by TV. At this time, we'll have our invocation. That'll be led by the Reverend Chris Kirby. I guess that would be the proper announcement, sir, with Cross Train Sports Ministry. So if you'll come forward, Pastor Kirby. And then our pledge of allegiance will be led by Commissioner Donnie Potter.
I see the words on the wall, "When God We Trust," and that encourages my heart. And I know that we have leaders in our community that still put God first. And men, I encourage you to even always put God first in every decision we make. Bible says, "For blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord." And I see God doing some awesome things at our church, and I believe God's going to do something awesome in Caldwell County. I don't know what it is yet. I don't know if it's revival he's going to send. Hopefully, it is. But as long as we always keep our eyes on Him, and we keep our trust in Him and our faith in Him, every decision that's made right here in this room, He'll honor it and He'll bless it. He promises us that in His word. So let us go to the Lord in prayer this morning. Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, God, we do thank you, Lord, for this opportunity. Father, I thank you for this opportunity, the pleasure it is to be in a room with these fine men and women. And Father, I pray for our county's leaders this morning. God, I pray that you'd give them wisdom, you'd give them guidance, you'd give them direction. Every decision, every word that is spoken, everything that is done in here, would it bring your name, glory, honor, and praise? May Caldwell County be known as a county that is one county under God and one nation under God. Father, may everything we do uplift and magnify the name of Jesus. God, I don't know what you have planned for Caldwell County. I don't know what the future holds, but I do know who holds the future. And Father, I pray that you would move in a mighty way. You would stir Caldwell County. You would send revival. You would make Caldwell County the very spot that revival starts, that we see a great movement of God like we've never seen, felt, or experienced before. God, I pray that you would bless these fine men that sit and stand before me this evening. God bless them. Give them wisdom. Give them guidance. Give them direction. Lord, I thank you for this opportunity. I thank you for this group that's here with me this evening. God, I thank you for your grace and your mercy, and I thank you for your Son, who willingly died, bled, and pled for my forgiveness on the cross. Lord, I love you. And so in Jesus' name, I pray this evening. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag. Salute our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Are there any amendments to our agenda this evening?
Mr. Chairman, there's one proposed amendment. Item 98 on the consent agenda approved the minutes from the March 8 meeting due to an error on the part of the clerk. You gentlemen didn't receive the minutes in your packet, so I respectfully request that we postpone that until the May meeting, and we'll approve both the March and April minutes at that time.
All right. Here in the recommendation of our clerk, what's the pleasure of the board this evening in adopting our agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept this evening's agenda as the county clerk has presented.
Any discussion or comment? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we have an agenda this evening. And the first item on our agenda is the first of three proclamations, it looks like. But the first one is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Chief Dino DiBonardi is with us this evening.
Good afternoon. Obviously, many times, we recognize first responders, and rightfully so, fire, EMS, law enforcement, nurses, doctors, and so on and so forth. The list goes on. There's one subset that's come to the forefront, especially in the last few years, that unfortunately many times goes unnoticed when being spoken about when it comes to emergencies, and that's telecommunications, 911 dispatchers, 911 operators. They go by many names, but they are truly the first link in the system, and there's nothing that could happen, or has ever happened, right, wrong, or indifferent, without their help. They absolutely set the stage for everything that happens on an emergency moving forward. So we have a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, which began yesterday, Sunday, April 11th, and runs through the 17th. And I'll read that now. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas, the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Caldwell County Emergency Communications Center, and whereas, public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas, public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas, public safety telecommunicators of the Caldwell County Emergency Services Communications Division has contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppressions of fire, and treatment of patients, and whereas, each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Therefore, be it resolved that the County Commission of Caldwell County declares the week of April 7th through the 17th, 2021, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Caldwell County in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Signed this day, April 12th, 2021. Chairman Randy Church.
All right. And here in the proclamation, I'll make a motion that we adopt that this evening in recognition of our telecommunicators and the vital link that they provide to each and every one of us in our county, and especially in emergency services. There's nobody like the person on the other end of that radio when you're asking for some help, and you hear a voice come on there that you know is going to do something for you. So is there any other comment or discussion?
I'll just add to that and say we appreciate each and every one of the work that they do. I know it's a thankless job sometimes that they do.
Very well.
Yeah, I will say too, along with these other two gentlemen, that commissioners, that telecommunications are very misunderstood. Nobody really knows what they do, and they don't understand the stress that they have to go through, and the multitasking of what a telecommunications has to do is pretty incredible. So if you've never sat in there and listened to them or watched them, it's pretty amazing to see what they do and how they keep up with all of it. And they also are the, not only are they the first line of defense back to the citizen who's needing help, but they're also constantly checking on the first responder or the police officers that might be out on a call. So watching that process work is pretty amazing. So they do a great job, and send them our thanks and appreciation.
All right. And with that, I'll call the question. All in favor of this proclamation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries unanimously. So thank you, Chief. Next is a proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month. Ms. Kim Arnett, Department of Social Services, is here. So, welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. We want to recognize April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month. And as part of our county's proclamation, we call upon our citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support children and families. So I want to take this opportunity for just a minute to talk to you about our department's role, or our social workers' role, in responding to and preventing child abuse and neglect. Our social workers respond and assist families after a report has been received by our department, and then screened by our social worker and supervisor, and making sure that these allegations meet a legal definition of abuse, neglect, or dependency. Following an investigation into the maltreatment allegations, families may be served by one of our five in-home services social workers. In this area, our social workers work intensely with families to resolve safety issues and prevent the need for further involvement of the department, but also prevent further involvement of the legal system. However, there are times when the court involvement is necessary to child protection and abuse prevention. When court involvement is initiated, one of our foster care or permanency social workers then become involved, and they will then work with the children and families to reunite those families if safe and possible. If that's not in the best interest of children, other permanent plans are pursued, such as custody, guardianship with a relative or caretaker, or adoption. During our involvement with families, our social workers are working hard to assess needs of the family, but also to identify strengths of the family. They are constantly balancing risk, what's risk, and what are true safety issues. They educate parents. They sometimes have to educate schools. They educate our community. Sometimes they facilitate, well, they always are linking and facilitating families with needed resources, and sometimes just the basic of needs. They continuously monitor their situations, all in order to ensure the children's current safety and to prevent any further incidents of maltreatment. It's important to know that these social workers, these protective services social workers, as well as our permanency services social workers, are trained and skilled professionals who begin their career with a minimum of a four-year degree. In addition to that, before they're able to work with families in our community, they must have a state-mandated 120-hour training. In addition to all of that, they must continue ongoing yearly trainings, such as medical and legal trainings, cultural awareness, safety, trainings that educate and update about current trends of substance use, sexual abuse, human trafficking, just to mention a few. They must also be equipped, through training and practice, with skills to handle each unique situation they encounter, but also to cope with the stress and anxiety and secondary trauma they experience from what they see and what they hear. It's important also, as we honor, you know, our work toward child abuse prevention, to recognize that we can't do this work alone, that our social workers cannot do this work alone. And we do work closely with law enforcement, EMS, the Robins Nest, the school system, mental health, mental health agencies in the community, and of course, members of our community, to prevent child abuse. So to speak to the people who are watching us today, and to talk about what they can do to help prevent child abuse, it's important to know, if you see something, you must say something. And so to say something, to make a report of maltreatment, we have on the screen how to do that. It's important to give as much information as you can when you call. However, if you don't know everything that's asked, that's okay. But as you can see, there's numbers you can call during business hours and after hours, weekends, and holidays. The Caldwell County Sheriff's Department will get the on-call social worker, because we do have a social worker on call 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. So if it's okay, I'm going to now read the proclamation.
Yes, ma'am.
Whereas, we recognize that children are vital to our county, state, and nation's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable assets. Whereas, all children deserve to have the safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development. Whereas, Caldwell County received 1,292 reports of child abuse and neglect, and investigated reports involving 1,606 children in 2020. Whereas, children who experience abuse and neglect have higher rates of academic failure, chronic long-term health issues, and increased propensity to violence if gone untreated. Whereas, child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility, affecting both the current and future quality of life of a community. Whereas, communities that provide parents with the social support, knowledge of parenting and child development, and concrete resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children, and ensure all children grow to their future potential. Whereas, effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Caldwell County does hereby proclaim April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and calls upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support children and families, thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the community in which we live.
All right. So here in the proclamation read, what's the pleasure of the board this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the proclamation as read by Ms. Arnett.
Any other comment or discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries unanimously.
Thank you.
So we thank you again. Thank you, agency, for what you do.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Kim. You don't want to read it, did you?
And then we have a third proclamation this evening, a Clean Caldwell, and Commissioner Donnie Potter is going to have some comments and read that proclamation for us.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. That's what I'm going to hope to do here. As most of you guys know, I've taken on the responsibility of, I guess, creating the first annual Clean Caldwell Day. That'll be this coming Saturday, April 17th. And I want to thank Paige Counts, our Public Information Officer, she's done a wonderful job in helping us kind of off the, out of the not much information at all. She's helped us create this and helped us to get the word out on this. But as many of you know, across not only Caldwell County, but our state, the litter, roadside litter is a pretty serious problem. And I know that a lot of us have a tendency to look back, and we think the state should take responsibility, and they do. I think they do own some responsibility, but we can't, we can't just put it on them either. We have to work on our own backyard. We have to take responsibility in our daily lives to make sure that we're educating our children, make sure we're doing the right thing by not littering our roads. And because of this, we've, I've asked the commissioners to pass this proclamation. I'll read it as it's been written here. This proclamation declaring April 17th, 2021, a Clean Caldwell Roadside Litter Pickup Day. Whereas Caldwell County is seen not only as a gateway to the mountains of western North Carolina, but contains many local treasures in its own lakes, rivers, and peaks, and wherever, whereas, the natural beauty of our county and state, as well as a clean environment or sources of pride for all citizens, attracting tourists and aiding and recruiting new industries. And whereas, litter is more prevalent than ever along roadways in Caldwell County, contributing to more than 2 million pounds of roadside litter collected throughout the state since January 1st, 2021. And whereas, roadside cleanup will improve the aesthetic appeal of Caldwell County, increasing awareness of the need of cleaner road sides, and emphasize the importance of not littering. And whereas, local communities, civic, and professional organizations, businesses, churches, schools, families, individuals, individual citizens are encouraged to participate in both the cleanup of road sides in Caldwell County and the anti-littering education. And whereas, the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners encourage all citizens to take pride in their community and environment by participating in the roadside cleanup on April 17th, 2021, and beyond. And now, therefore, the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners proclaim April 17th, 2021, as the first annual, a Clean Caldwell Roadside Litter Pickup Day.
All right. And do you want to make that in form of a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we pass this proclamation as read.
Any other comment or discussion this evening?
I want to thank you guys for supporting this. I think it's something that, I know the City of Lenore is working on their cleanup day on the next Wednesday, this coming Wednesday is the 14th. I also want to remind people that the NC DOT Litter Sweep across the state of North Carolina is April 10th through the 24th. So if you can't make our cleanup day on the 17th, reach out to NC DOT, they're in the Hudson office, and they'll gladly help you with anything you may need for your group or individual to clean that up.
All right. And with that, I'd like to commend Commissioner Potter, as he has taken numerous days already, and he and his family and others have went out and cleaned up the sides of the roads in various places in our county, and carrying on this for the 17th. So we certainly encourage everybody to have a part in that, who can participate in helping us clean up our roadways. And we certainly know that that's a very important and vital function of keeping our county clean. And I did see a sign up this week, "Give a Hoot, Don't Pollute."
Yep.
And I remember that from my childhood days, so I'm hoping that some of that's going to...
That's coming from the Methodist Church, I think, Boy Scout Troop out of Hudson.
Yeah.
The ones who's put that together, also participating on Saturday. I will add, Mr. Chairman, Paige left me a note earlier. As of today, we have 14 groups, and so far, 92 volunteers have signed up on the website. And if there's a link out there on our website that you can go to, and you'll put your group name, your number of attendees in your group, the road that you're anticipating on cleaning up, your phone number and email address, that'll help us to be prepared when you come on Saturday morning to pick up your bags and your safety vest. We will supply the bags. We will supply the safety vest for you.
And just as a reminder too, if we pick up, then we leave that on the road, and DOT will come pick, pick those bags up.
That's correct.
So it's a great program, and even though we're doing it on Saturday, the state has this Adopt a Highway program that runs year-round, if anybody would desire to do that.
That's correct.
So...
Mr. Chairman, at our last MPO meeting, I did say that they had funding back into the state to do more, start mowing more regularly and pick up trash too.
That's good.
So maybe we'll see something in that.
Yes, sir. That'll be great. All right. With that, and the motion, I'll call the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. So thank you again. That brings us to a couple items for decision this evening, and the first is Chief Dino DiBonardi, an SUD grant, supporting justice involved with individuals.
All right. Come to you again tonight. We presented earlier this year and got approval to apply for this grant. We have since, fortunately, been awarded the grant, and I come to you tonight to seek guidance on whether to accept the grant funding. I'll go through it, but a brief overview is it's $500,000 over the next two years, $250,000 each year for this program for justice-involved individuals. Not going to bore you with the, with reading. I know everybody can read, but this is going to support those individuals that are either currently in the justice system, so at some point in time have either been arrested or going through some type of diversion system, or have the potential, which obviously leaves you wide open, because in theory, everyone has the potential to be involved in the justice program, due to opioid abuse. It creates and expands programs for pre-hospital and pre-justice involved, so hopefully to catch those individuals prior to re-entering the justice system or re-entering the medical program. So it has actually been awarded to Caldwell County. Our justification is fairly simple. We've seen a resurgence in another epidemic, the opioid crisis, which is just as, if not much more serious than the pandemic we are in. It's also a fully self-supported program, which will augment many existing county and community-based programs, and supports North Carolina's Opioid Action Plan, which I know is spoken about many times through the Association of County Commissioners. So about the program, the goal here is to address the needs of justice-involved individuals with substance abuse disorder, and to expand access to treatment and recovery support. As you'll see, it is very scary what the pandemic effects have been on opioid abuse. I am somewhat embarrassed in the fact that I didn't realize the resurgence was as substantial as it is, but you'll see some very recent and updated numbers. Recidivism is a real big thing. Also embarrassed to say that I did not really understand the concept behind recidivism. That is a re-entry into the justice, so, you know, most justice-involved individuals, especially related to opioid abuse, are much more likely to re-offend. And speaking with the Sheriff's Department, who has been fantastic to work with with this, over 90% of the processes that are involved with the Detectives Division involve opiates at some level. That's an extremely high number, 90%. So generally speaking, 90% of the issues which the Sheriff's Department are involved in, and the Detectives Division, are related to opiates. So the values here, obviously, we're going to reduce vulnerabilities, reduce mortality, which of course EMS, that's a big name of the game here, reduce recidivism, create access to culturally inconclusive services by impacting historically marginalized populations, provide access to care and services, that we'll get back here in a minute, and then obviously reduce costs, which you will see tremendous impact there. And then the team is actually, it's a huge, so I'm not going to go very deep into that. The funds do fund for two years, and now we are in the process, should we accept this money tonight, for an additional extension, which could provide up to five years, for the program coordinator, which is grant-funded, a linkage coordinator, which is grant-funded. Those two report directly to the EMS chief, who's in attendance, and the community paramedic program, as well as the emergency services director, health director, the sheriff, and detention center captain. And as a part of our program, we received letters of support from many partner agencies, some of which are listed here. I'd be more than happy to provide those to you. We have them all included in my packet here. So it is very impressive the amount of resources that Caldwell County has to offer for those that are involved in opiate abuse. It's also very embarrassing at the lack of resources once someone enters the system, and that's what we're trying to impact here. So further justification, this is something that was very surprising to me. When we, when we got started with this, Dr. McClantney started as a medical director quite a few years ago. I've been here for 16. She's been here for 15 of that. And she started immediately when she arrived in Caldwell County from Maryland, monitoring overdoses. At that time, you know, there were overdoses, but it was a general, what we would call traditional drug use. Once prescription pills and other opiates really started flooding the system, it's amazing the change in those overdoses. Whereas, generally speaking, and locks on, we refer to as Narcan, we could give someone, you know, half a milligram of Narcan, no problem at all, everything works. We take them to the hospital, generally speaking, they were going to the hospital to receive treatment, no harm, no foul. Unfortunately now, with the resurgence of many different types of opiates and different types of drug use in general, the potency is extremely high. So half a milligram is not touching. We're now giving eight, 10, 12 milligrams, which is absolutely unheard of. I mean, so Narcan does not remove the opiate from your system, it just doesn't allow the receptors to receive it. So it ruins your high. It allows the person to hopefully regain consciousness, breathing on their own, is a very simplistic way of giving that. So prior to what we will call our pandemic, 316, 2019 to 315, 2020, so on the 16th, we started officially the pandemic in Caldwell County, 94 patients were given Narcan with 141 doses administered. So that right there shows you that even pre-COVID, patients were getting multiple doses of Narcan there. Same time period with a couple extra days, I wanted to show you through the end of March in 2021, 181 patients were administered or given Narcan, 280 doses were administered. What that shows just below that, I apologize, it's zoomed in just a little too much, is 230 calls dispatched as overdoses during that time period. You can see on that bar graph, it shows, unfortunately, that has doubled. Now, we fully anticipate an increase of 25%. We account for an increase of 10 to 20% each year, so we understand that it's going to surpass that. What you don't account for is a doubling. There's, at no time would we have been able to account for that. Also, what is concerning to us is Narcan, we spend more on Narcan than any other medication. And, you know, we can get absolutely into that if you would like to, but you can see Epi, most people are very familiar with Epi, for cardiac arrest, we obviously spend way more on Narcan than, than any other medication. And the graph on the right, you will see that the number of calls for overdoses also increased. Now, this does not account for some things. Obviously, we, we don't always track the cause of death on a cardiac arrest. Many cardiac arrests are related to overdoses. There are other things that could be related to overdoses, motor vehicle accidents, respiratory distress, OB and labor. There's a lot of things that can go into that. So that's one justification. It's also a fully self-supported program. There is absolutely no cost to the citizens of Caldwell County or general budget. Grant funds cover the entirety of the expenses, including the medical supplies, provider staff, staff development, media, office equipment and supplies, technology, salaries, supplies and materials for the public. It literally offsets the entirety of the program, plus the plants funding for existing budgetary needs to fight this epidemic. And then finally, it also supports North Carolina Opioid Action Plan, with which each county has a responsibility to, to implement. And the new version, the main points of the new, the 2.0 version of this, go into prevention, reducing harm, and then obviously, creating access to care. You will see that... You will see that, found a fantastic website, if anyone is interested in this, it's a great thing for the public to look at of what you are seeing in the emergency departments and in the healthcare field as a whole in the state of North Carolina. Injury Free North Carolina is a DHHS website, and it's amazing the things that you can find here specific to this slide with opioid overdoses. So if, if you do decide to accept the $250,000 for the upcoming year, and then the following $250,000 for the next year, acceptance and implementation would begin this month into May, and then the program support actually through 2024, fiscal year 2324, with extension potential through DHHS and COVID-19 related grants, which is part of the programs that President Biden just implemented with the American Rescue Act funds and further infrastructure and grants related to COVID. So very quick 30,000 feet view of the grant itself. We did talk about it before. I know there was some concern related to grant-supported employees that would be county employees. We have reached out to some universities and colleges in the area. They're very excited about partnerships with us should we decide to pursue this, as many of their students do want to gain experience prior to moving into further positions and higher level positions, and they expressed extreme interest in sending us interns to actually further support the program that would also be of no cost to the county. So I come to you asking if you would like to accept it. It does allow for the acceptance of the full 500,000, which we were granted after our application was accepted by the state.
All right. And with his request, any other questions of Dino this evening?
Couple of questions, Dino. First of all, what is your recommendation? Do you want us to support this? You never said that.
You know, I am in full support of it. I was somewhat skeptical. Again, I will say I was embarrassed to say that I didn't realize that we had had a doubling of overdoses. Sheriff's Department has done some fantastic things lately with knocking drug dealers, you know, out of the equation. The problem is eliminating drugs unfortunately is not something I will see in my lifetime. So we have to, we have to impact the effects of it, and there's no one in this room that hasn't seen the effects of it either inadvertently or directly. There's literally no one, whether that be the cost related to providing our services or something very personal, you know, I can't speak for everybody, but yes, I'm in full support for the program. I can't imagine leaving half a million dollars on the table.
Do you, is this, is this the first grant of this nature across the state, or is this, is this been done elsewhere?
So it has been done quite a few times. Actually, the Health Department just got one that this is a sister grant to. Grant, you know, I asked that question. I was, I'm as concerned as anybody. We hire someone knowing that in two years, there is the potential that it is obviously grant-funded, and there may not be a spot for that person. I am not requesting that we continue it at the end if there is no grant funding. I would hope that the program was so well-developed that we could sustain it without those. But I will also say that the state is telling us, they are encouraging us that those that accept will obviously have the potential for that extension through the additional three years to make five years. Now, what happens at the end of the two years, what happens at the end of the five years, you know, I don't have that crystal ball unfortunately, but no, it's by far not the first one. It's actually not the first one that the county has gotten, but it is the first one in a while for Caldwell County that would be of this amount and hiring staff.
I guess I was looking for more, do we have any, do we have any knowledge of any other counties who have gotten this type of grant, have put this type of program in place? Any success stories, any failures, any?
This is the first one related to this specific. This is a very narrowed guidance. It's, it's directly related to COVID. It's being paid for with COVID funding. They, they moved us when we were asking our questions to DARE programs, to the, the SUD programs, which I also have to admit, I did not know what that stood for. It's Substance Use Disorder. There are many SUD grants out there. Most of the time, it's going to be law enforcement and health department related. They're the ones that get it. There's a lot of it that goes towards alcohol, but there's a, there's a huge focus now. They have inundated the system with, with doctors, trying to prevent doctors from prescribing as much or certain types. They're doing the same thing with, you know, depending on what your position is, you know, I can speak all day on my opinion professionally and personally on distribution of Narcan to the public for free, but that's also part of it. So yes, to answer your question, there's plenty of grants out there. This specific, no, there's never been anything like that.
You know, I'm still concerned about hiring two more employees. I mean, when we, by the time we hire somebody, put them on, buy them cars, I mean, we're talking $100,000. You say it's fully funded, that's almost $100,000 per person by the time you do everything to them. I mean, that's very little money left to do anything with, the way I look at it.
We had, so there, there wouldn't be cars. There is the potential for reimbursement for mileage through the program. It does support, and we went through HR for what those, you know, what through our classification it would be. It gets down JF to absolutely, quite honestly, down to how much we would be able to spend on pencils. It is that in-depth, we can go through. It is, you're very close on it, $99,948.58 with all fringe benefits and salaries. That's for two positions each year. So yes, round numbers, it's $100,000 a year for the two years, but that still leaves $300,000 for the program, most of which goes for providing overdose prevention kits to the public, educational information to those citizens. Programs, you know, we've spoken with the DA, many of the judges, all of the police departments, providing programs and equipment for their staff to hopefully prevent that recidivism, people going back into jail, re-offending, and then obviously hopefully not overdosing and subsequent death. We want to reduce that mortality. So yeah, I mean, a big portion obviously is the cost associated with hiring the two people.
Then we're going to have to furnish them offices somewhere.
That's, that is correct. There would be two offices, which we do have access to the offices in our, our building. We have a couple of different options there, but it even pays for, if we would have had to have built offices, but it pays for the furniture, chairs, desks, all of it included.
And then like I say, after the two years, if we don't get the money, we got two more employees there too.
Well, so the, the employees would be based off the grant, so when grant funding ends, you know, they would be aware at the forefront that their, their employment here would be based on grant funding. So they would, you know, if the grant ended, which obviously is the potential at the end of the two years or the end of the fifth year, if there was the extension for the three, that, that it would be the choice of the county if you would, but I'm not asking for the extension. I'm, I'm asking for here for the, the two years that the grant covers.
So just to be clear, that they would know coming in two years, and if it doesn't extend, then their employment would cease.
That's correct.
You know, I think, and you made this comment, that I think there's probably not anybody that I know of that's not been impacted by some type of opioid abuse. Obviously Caldwell County has a problem, and you know, and I understand Commissioner Branch's concern, and I've got the same concerns, but at the same time, I feel like that this is an opportunity for us to do something. We as a county have not really done a whole lot to combat the opioid problem in this county, and I think it's, it is an opportunity for us to, to step forward and, you know, get this grant, get this money, put this program in place. And if we can save one person, it's worth it. If we can save one person's life, at the end of the day, it was worth it. So I'm willing to take the chance, and I fully support you, and I will vote for this, to, to accept this grant tonight, so we can at least make an attempt to do something for our citizens in this county who have opioid problem.
I think Commissioner Potter hits that nail on the head. We've been very reactive. I mean, we have to react when somebody is, is overdosing, but this may allow us an opportunity to be more proactive to stop that.
And I guess, since you brought that up, I apologize, I'm not trying to extend this, but so right now, I have no ability through Sheriff's Department, Health Department, DSS, or Emergency Services to, when we go out to an overdose and we give someone Narcan, I cannot legally make them go with us. I don't agree with that. I am wholeheartedly, adamantly opposed to that. I don't on any level from a healthcare provider think that that is good business. However, legally, we can't do that. Also, correct me if I'm wrong, when you get called for 911 for a medical emergency, they can't arrest someone because you overdosed, even though it's illicit drugs. Now, if there's other things going on, obviously there's that potential. This offers us the opportunity, those people will be involved in the justice system some way, somehow, usually already have. This gives us the opportunity to provide them with Narcan, to provide them with that education, to provide the family, not only them, but to provide their family with those resources. So unfortunately, a lot of the people that are in the care of DSS have something in some way been impacted with that opioid abuse. So now we're able to throw resources their way. I'm able to give those children resources, the school systems resources, the, the community college resources. So it, yes, unfortunately, we are reactive, and you know, prevention should be the name of the game. I've said that many times, law enforcement and fire departments are fantastic at prevention. Unfortunately, in pre-hospital emergency care, we are not. We are reactive. You call 911, we go, we deal with it at the time.
Are you saying that you can give the people's families Narcan in case they overdose? That's just like saying it's okay to do drugs and.
I agree, but the problem there is if we don't, they will die. And I, believe me, I, there's opinions on both sides of the aisle. The issue is though, there's plenty of people that, so whether you believe that opioid abuse is a illness or not can be obviously argued, and there's people in the medical field on both sides of that aisle. The issue though is, so if, if you've taken whatever opiate your entire life, let's say your drug of choice is an eight ball, and you've done an eight ball for 10 years, and you get something that, from somebody else, I'm going to use a perfect example. Sheriff's Department just nailed a very high, what I would consider a high roller, very high-quality drugs. People knew what they were getting. Drug users knew what they were getting from this guy, always consistent. Well, for drug users, that's fine. If I know I take a half a milligram every time, I'm going to take a half a milligram. They take him off the street, what did that start doing to our overdoses? They didn't go down, they went up substantially, because then you were getting something you didn't know. So that half a milligram from the craphead one now becomes something from this other guy that you don't know, and it could be something completely off-base, and now that half a milligram kills them, just like that. And it can be literally just like that. Well, we go into these houses, and yes, family knows, and you know, they're, I wouldn't say they support the drug use, but it's still their kid, and we have a duty to act. So when we go in, we give Narcan, unfortunately, at that point, that person's going to refuse. And out of the 131 that have been transported in the pandemic, 29 refused treatment and transport, 17 were dead. So 29 of those people, out of those 131, guess how many are going to re-offend? 131, you can guarantee, actually, I'm going to rephrase that, 17 of them won't. I mean, that sounds harsh, but that's the true name of the game. I have to find a way to reduce that number. And right now, I can't legally give Narcan from my ambulance for those people to have at that house. But yes, if I can prevent one person from overdosing and dying, or if I can prevent people from going back into jail or stealing something, I mean, that's what you're stealing for. You're not stealing stuff for money to put in your pocket. You're stealing stuff to support your habit.
Right.
So it, it involves a lot of people. Personally, I have my feelings on administration of Narcan by the public. Professionally, I'm 100% in support of it, because ultimately, at the end of the day, somebody's life is going to be saved, probably just extended, but somebody's life is going to be saved because they were administered Narcan. That's no different, in my opinion. If I, if I refuse to support this program, then I should also refuse to buy Epi for cardiac arrests, or Benadryl for anaphylactic shock. The list can go on.
Are we going to have a program to teach these people?
That's, and that's what this is. Yeah, this is.
How to give.
I want to be, I want them to know how to give it.
Are we going to be held responsible if I give it to them after we give them the Narcan? Are we going to be held responsible if our people, if them people give it to them and they die?
No, it's a, so completely covered by the Good Samaritan law there. The biggest component of this program would be education, and that's what we're not good at in EMS. I will be the first to admit it. I, I love going to the festivals and stuff and handing out stuff, and the kids love it, and I love giving that stuff out. Hands-only CPR has saved lives in Caldwell County. This will save lives in Caldwell County. And another thing that will save lives is if I can't help the drug user, I can help prevent their kids or their, you know, the loved ones, there has to be a way to stop the cycle. You'll never stop drugs. I, I'm, I'm sorry, I know that there's people out there that want to, and you're, you can blame it on the crisis at the border, or you can blame it on Syria and the Middle East. You'll never stop drugs. It's not going to happen. They've been around since the beginning of time. There's got to be a way to break the trend, and this is one way that we're going to try. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but I can't in good faith not recommend this program to throw a half a million dollars at a program that will help save a substantial component of Caldwell County citizens. And it has the distinct potential to reduce costs in EMS, reduce costs in the Sheriff's Department, reduce costs in DSS, reduce costs in the Health Department, reduce costs in the healthcare system, which does impact every person. Can I swear it's going to do it? No. I can tell you it's going to reduce my costs in EMS.
Kim, Will, y'all have any, I know it's kind of a sudden question, do y'all have any kind of off the top of your head, a percent of children that are impacted in DSS through I know it's going to be high, so.
It is, and we do have, there is survey and information that we've looked at. I don't want, I can't place a number on it, I cannot remember.
But we know that we had to do some research into that topic, maybe it was a year and a half ago, but it was some, we don't know it off the top of our heads, but there is a, it is a large percentage of children who come into our care with parental substance abuse being one of, one of the major issues that they're facing. So I can get that, we can get that exact percentage. It won't be.
No, that's okay. I just, I was just thinking about, he touched about the impact that it will have at DSS, and I know there's been a couple of incidences fairly recently where a child was, well, a child was actually set out in the middle of a field in the cold, wet, no clothes by a dad who was high on drugs. And our great sheriff's office had to chase the gentleman down. He had a handgun on him and told the sibling that he had with him after he dumped the other kid out, that if they tried to shoot me, get in the way, so keep you from, keep them from shooting your daddy. So I know that children are heavily impacted. So that's why I just, I feel like that, I mean, to me, it's a no-brainer. It's half a million dollars, you can't just, can't not do it.
Dino, the partnerships you spoke about, my understanding that some of these may be with some college students, graduate students, that you might use in these positions as entry-level job for them, so even with the grant, they may be able to work a couple of years and then use that experience and training to move on into their field.
More on Appalachian, Western Carolina, and Community College, all expressed interest, especially more on Western Carolina and Appalachian with their master's programs, their graduate programs. While they're in school, they're able to fulfill 40-hour-a-week-plus jobs while augmenting their education. So there's also internships available. My, you know, my, my job here, when I started, was an intern job. You also had a very highly motivated nursing program locally and with, obviously Appalachian Community College, but also outside of, because a lot of the, you know, nurses don't always want to go into a clinical setting. Some will want to be in the school system, some will want to be in health departments and other settings like that, prevention, RHA. You know, that list that I showed you, I could go through the specifics, but we have letter of support from plenty, but you know, a lot of the teaching institutions wanted to, to obviously help the program and wants to learn from us. They want to include it. We have a very strict reporting requirement to the state, so there's going to be some hard numbers that show, are we making an impact? How many people are we touching and what subset? So there's no limitation, but it just has to be those that are justice-involved now. There is the ability to touch prevention there, to prevent from justice-involved, and then the ancillary effects, which is families, loved ones, you know, neighbors, everything.
And I think, I think Bumby can probably answer this. Just been a few weeks ago, we had what, five or six in one day?
Oh, yeah.
I think it might even been seven was the total.
I think we've reached up to 10, 11.
Yeah, I think just a few weeks ago, I remember like seven we had in one day, so.
All right. Well, with that, I'll, anybody else got a question or? Well, I'll call the question and ask what the pleasure of the board is in adopting the approval of receiving this SUD grant.
approval of receiving this SUD grant.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the receiving of this grant that's being presented to us.
All right. Any other comment or discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that carries unanimously, and again, thank you, Dino. And I'll just simply say, and I know one question, and it bears on my mind, but I'm a parent and a grandparent, and if, if my child was being affected by this, and you could give me some Narcan to make sure I knew they were going to live, I'd take it and, and, and do my best to keep my kid alive, and I'm sure there's others out here that will too. So just make sure we do the right thing in helping some folks with this.
We won't let you down, I promise.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dino.
Good job, guys.
Next is, yeah, thank you. Next is a preliminary plat approval, Castle Bridge subdivision. Shelley Stevens, our planning director, is here.
Good evening, and thank you for hearing this request. On behalf of the applicants who are here today, one of the developers, Jack Daniels, with Middle Street Residential, and then his engineer, John Kenard, is also here. And the property that is on your screen here today is just south of Drive Ponds Road, and it's east and adjacent Connolly Springs Road and north of Lake Road His. It's approximately 436 acres, and they are hoping to create single-family residential lots on this parcel. And tonight, they have a preliminary plat that they're proposing for approval in your packets. And currently, the area is wooded, but of course, this would become residential if this is approved at the final plat stage. And they are requesting approval tonight of phases one and two of the 204-lot subdivision that they have planned out here, which includes the required common open space that they have to include in every subdivision of this size per our subdivision ordinance. They have met all of the requirements in the checklist within our subdivision ordinance for preliminary plats, for approval of preliminary plats. And when they come forward with a final plat in the future, they probably will do those one phase at a time. Again, it's a two-phase subdivision. I and the planning board both did review the plat and supplementary documents that they have submitted against the subdivision ordinance, as I mentioned, the checklist and everything within the ordinance. And we did provide comments back to the engineer who made revisions, and then it was presented formally to the planning board. And evidence that public water is available to the subdivision, or that capacity is not available alternatively, is due upon final plat approval per the subdivision ordinance, and the applicant is aware of this tonight, but still would like to approve this preliminary plat. Baiton Water Corporation's capacity is currently being studied by Jacob Gray with Withers Ravinal, and that's who would serve this subdivision if it can connect to public water. And again, since they are unsure if it's available, they wanted to get the preliminary plat approved, and then they will have to replat into larger lots, so a smaller number of lots total, if water is unavailable or only available for some of this area. And they're aware of that, so they would just provide a new preliminary plat in that situation. And just so you're aware, the surrounding school system, how it may be impacted if this were to develop fully, all 204 lots, Sawmill's Elementary, which is the district that applies here, could have 49 new students based on the Western Piedmont Council of Government School Growth Estimation Model that they can run. And Hudson Middle would be 18 students. It would increase by 18 students, is again, just an estimate. South Caldwell High would increase by 25 students. And I did check, and there don't seem to be capacity issues with those schools at this time. So Sawmill's Elementary currently has 302 students enrolled, and the building capacity is 419 students, and so there are 117 students below capacity. They're at 72.1% capacity right now. And then Hudson Middle currently has 712 students enrolled, and their building capacity is 954, and so they're 242 students below capacity, and that's 74.6% of their building capacity that they're meeting currently. For South Caldwell High, they have 1,386 students, and their building capacity is 2,000, and they're 614 students below capacity, which is 69.3% of their capacity being taken at this time. And I have some of the supplementary information that I previously mentioned here with me tonight, if you have any questions about that. The planning board's recommendation is approval of the preliminary plat, given that they did meet the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. And again, there are also items that they would have to provide us before final plat approval. And they did say that they're interested in bonding for the improvements, such as the road and things of that nature, all of the improvements they want to bond, and they will have to provide an estimate, and we will review that estimate, and we'll have that bond. And all the roads do have to be certified by a professional engineer that they are completed to DOT standards. So they have a main collector road going through the subdivision, and then some local roads planned that you can see on the plat there. Those are the only two types of roads that they would have in this mountainous terrain category, and they do plan to meet all of DOT's requirements with regards to the roads. And they wouldn't have any roads that were above 11.5% slope. So I didn't know if, I won't go on and on, I'll just see if y'all have any questions about anything, and happy to answer.
If we approve the preliminary plat tonight, and it does not meet the requirements for water, they will present another preliminary plat that we will have to approve again?
That's correct, and it's a little confusing, but that is what they've chosen to do, and they do have a right to do that, because they don't have to prove that they've got water capacity available to the subdivision until final plat approval, and that's just the method they want to take. They would rather replat to larger lots, a smaller number of lots total, if they have to, in the case that they use wells, or they can only get water provided to so many lots, and bring that back again.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else have any questions or comments? So I guess with that, I'll ask what the pleasure of the board is in adopting this preliminary plat approval this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve this preliminary plat approval, Castle Bridge subdivision.
All right. Any other questions or comments? I will say, I know we've been working diligently with these folks, and, and they've met every need that we've asked, and I know the, the water issue is certainly one of those, but I think there's some, we're moving in the right direction on being able to accomplish that as well. So with that, I'll call the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. So thank you, folks, for being here. And thank you for building in Caldwell County.
Yes.
And the school system would love for you to fill those schools up, I know.
Yeah. And by the way, Jack, you got a pretty cool name. I don't know how. Not many people can walk around, I mean, there's one guy that we know that walks around with the name Jack Daniels, but he's the only one I know.
I'll bring my father and my son to be free with it.
All right. Thank you, folks, for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next, we have a presentation this evening for a DSS classification request. I guess trying to get an early start on the upcoming budget process, but anyway, Will Wakefield is here, and Jimmy Harrison, and, and again, Kim Arnett, all in support of talking about a reclassification.
Get to take this off, try to talk to you gentlemen. Good evening. DSS is requesting that the county add the classification of Social Worker Investigative Assessment and Treatment, Grade 70, to the classification plan. This new classification comes from the Office of State Human Resources. It is their classification, their grade, and all we would have to do is to take and add that grade, or that classification to our salary and classification plan. Because it is a new classification, it must be approved by you, the Board of Commissioners. And Mr. Wakefield's here to discuss this.
Before you run off now, so if we, if we approve this classification, we'd be going into the, I guess, budget time as, as a new classification. Are you going to have any other reclassifications in the upcoming budget?
At this time, no.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of, until the budget, until the budget comes out.
And this is kind of a direct result of where our pay study might have fallen short that we had a couple years ago, and now we're expanding, or more services is coming online, or?
I don't, I don't think that the pay study, what, what they didn't do is because the Department of Social Services and the Health Department, their classifications and their job descriptions are put out there by the Office of State Human Resources.
Oh, okay.
So those, those are there. The other positions that we had throughout the county, that's what they looked at. So they were included in the classification as far as the, the salary and those things. The, the job descriptions, classifications, those are there by the state. So they're outlined, they tell us what grade that we have to match and those things. So they, this because they were not, that portion was not included, but they were included in salary.
Yeah.
So you're talking about just reclassifying somebody, you're not talking about hiring somebody else?
Correct.
Correct. So all this does is, this is really more of a, the way I understand it, it's more of a retention and recruitment tool that you guys can use, and I'll let you expand on that, Kim and Will.
Yes, and those are all good questions. I'm not sure where that's, that's going to go. But yeah, as Jimmy, as Jimmy was stating, the investigations and assessment and treatment classification, it is a, it's a state classification, it's there. We have never used that in Caldwell County. I don't know why we've never used that classification, but we have it. Most counties use that classification, most counties across the state, and most counties in our area. And so in utilizing that classification for staff who specifically do child welfare work, investigations, investigating abuse and neglect, as Kim talked about just a little while ago, and for those specific social work staff who then work with those families, specifically giving them treatment services, we call that in-home services, those individuals, those positions and those duties are the ones that are most appropriate in that class, but we have never had that class in Caldwell County. So for us, it starts to create, and it has started to create an issue when other counties around us, other counties across the state, do utilize that classification. We have never utilized that classification. And so for us, that is the most appropriate one. So I'm going to let Kim talk just a little bit more specifics around why that is important, but for us, it is beginning to cause an issue with retention, and certainly with recruitment as we recruit against counties who do have that classification. So Kim, if you want to.
So just to expand a little on the areas where this would affect, because it is very specific across the state, that it only affects what we would consider our protective services. So in child welfare, you have protective services, and then you have permanency services. And so in protective services, those are two of our, well, those are some of our highest-risk positions. Those are the social workers who go out and investigate child mal-treatment. They're the ones that are making that, you know, going out and visiting those families who are making those very well-informed, yet expedient decisions about what is unsafe about the situation that they're encountering. You know, they are, the intensive work that the in-home families' social workers do are with some of our highest-risk, there's, I'm sorry, that's, I'm getting some feedback here. They are with some of our highest-risk families, and so they work with families that there's safety issues that they've recognized and acknowledged, but yet those kids may still be with parents because we don't have legal justification for separation at that point. So those positions, just like any other child welfare position, we need highly skilled, well-trained, seasoned social workers out there working with these families. And so, you know, it's, it's becoming especially important right now, because turnover across the state is very high in the investigative and assessment discipline. So we're seeing that over the past little bit, we have become, or are becoming somewhat of a training ground. This has historically never been the case in Caldwell County. We prided ourselves on being the county where people left other counties to come to. And now, we're seeing we are training people for up to three years, and because there are no advancement after a social worker three, because there's no appropriate classification after that for the INT, they're seeing in other agencies where they can get that, and they're leaving us for that particular, doing the same job, but having that different classification. There are some surrounding counties that have used that classification for 15 years. So this is not a new classification. This is something that's been there for quite some time. You know, being able to retain staff is certainly very important, and we talk about that. We talk about, you know, we need our people to have incentive to stay with us, because we have a ton of experience in our permanency services, and we value those workers tremendously. But in the protective services, where your turnover is very common, we are really lacking in some of that. And so we want to see more of that. We want to see people staying, and after we train them and coach them, that they're with us for a while. But in addition to retaining staff, we're going to have turnover, and that's going to happen. But this becomes also especially important when we're recruiting staff, because when someone is going online looking for jobs, and they see social worker three in Caldwell County versus a social worker INT in Burke County, in Alexander County, in Catawba County, McDowell County, then, you know, that's a little more attractive to them. And so the more qualified, the more experienced applicants are going to reach out for, to those other counties. And so we need it also as a recruitment tool to be competitive with our surrounding counties.
Thank you. Kim, you had touched on it a little bit, and I think it's one of the things that I didn't truly understand was the fact that, obviously, turnover, we don't want it at all.
Right.
But to have turnover in child protective services is a, not a very good thing, because those are the people, when you mentioned it, they go out to a, to a home, they have to make that quick decision, and somebody who's been with us 15 years, 17 years, has a much better understanding of what they're looking at.
Right.
And experiencing what they're doing versus somebody who's only been with us a year or two.
Correct.
So retaining that 15, 18-year employee is critical, and I think we might have lost a couple of those tenured folks that is really detrimental to our child protective services. So my understanding is, is this going, this is the way that will allow you to keep what we got, the good, retain what we have, and also, like you said, to recruit when it comes time to recruit new folks.
Correct.
But that, that position is extremely critical, because they have to be able to identify that abuse situation, or whatever it might be, when they're on.
Right.
On the spot. They have to be able to make that decision.
Yes. And they, they have to go out there, and they have to determine at that moment, the first contact with the family, are there safety interventions needed, and what are those, and what do I need to do?
Right.
Now, of course, we have policy, we have to, you know, have supervisor input and whatnot, but that supervisor is relying on what that social worker in the field is telling them, and what their assessment, their perception is of what's going on with that family. And it's not only a benefit to our agency or our county, it's a benefit to, you know, the citizens that we work with.
Yeah, I think one part of the reason, and Chairman had mentioned it when we first started, was that you're bringing this before budget time, and I think it's because we actually have, potentially have a couple other folks that are, that are looking, that we really can't afford to lose.
Right. And, you know, we've talked with.
It'll cripple us.
Will and I make an, make a point that whenever anyone is talking about, we hear anyone's talking about leading, we make a point to meet with them face-to-face, and, you know, ask, what is it that, you know, you, what is it that you're considering, or how come you're considering this? And, you know, we've gotten that feedback from several of our recent, recent staff that have left, and then also some that are currently actively looking.
And some of that is, you know, from a professional standpoint, just like, you know, whether it's EMS or law enforcement and other areas, you know, you have professionals that want to be recognized in, you know, in the appropriate class for what they do. And so that, that's another piece of it that is important. I think as, as Kim mentioned, when someone's looking at, you know, you know, they're looking at our county or another county or what have you, they want that position to be at the level that the work they're going to do is at. And so that's why, you know, we believe it is, it is so important to have those appropriately-trained, experienced staff. And right now, why we're coming to you at this point in time is because we have, over the past six, seven, eight months, we've, we've really been having some difficulties there, and we really, honestly, you know, we want to kind of nip that in the bud where it is right now, if we can, and that is why we are approaching you now. And at the same time, you know, for the rest of this fiscal year, I will say, those, the county dollars are very minimal, we can cover that within our budget. So it's, it's important to us to hopefully get a hold of it, use this as a tool to assist us in this way, and that's, that is why we are coming to you at this point in time.
I got a couple questions. How much is pay raise? Between a three and a. How much is pay raise between a three and a INT or whatever? What's the difference?
The, the figure within the, in the classification, it's a grade sixty-nine is a social worker three and a grade seventy is an INT. And so Jimmy was just handing me this, the, the hire is, in a grade sixty-nine, which is a social worker three, is forty thousand six eighty-six, a grade seventy hires of forty-two thousand three ninety-five. Now, what I will say is that obviously being a grade, being a grade higher, that also means that people, they have to qualify and so, you know, you can have someone who is currently working for us and they may not qualify at that level yet, so they still have to build up that time, that experience, whether that's education or what have you, to get to that level. So in making that change, there are some people who, someone may qualify right now, but there are individuals who are not necessarily qualified.
And how many people are in threes that could go to this program?
At this, oh, go ahead. At this moment, there are thirteen social workers who would qualify for an INT level, but as Will said, some, you know, because some of them still need to have more years of experience to qualify. So it is something...
And it's a couple of thousand more dollars per person. I mean, is that...
Depending on where they fall.
Yeah.
Yeah, somewhere, I mean, somewhere according to what he just said, wasn't it? So, I mean, that sounds reasonable to me to keep...
I think the total, did I, did I see a number, your total expense was like nineteen thousand dollars or something like that?
Over, over a twelve-month period.
Yeah.
County dollar would be nineteen thousand dollars.
That's what I thought.
Certainly for the next several months within this fiscal year, it would be around close to five thousand dollars.
That's what, I didn't think it was, I didn't think it was that much.
Yeah.
You said you already had this built in your budget to cover it during the remainder of the fiscal year?
Correct. Yes.
Good questions. Now, sir, I would just say, I think we need to be, as you have said, in line with other counties around us in this pay classification. I mean, if we need to be at a seventy, we certainly need to be there. I don't have any problem with doing that at, at all.
And I will, I will say this, I guess it's more directed at Jimmy than it is anything else, is that whether, if you have time or not, it'd be nice to know, is there any other positions out here that we don't, that we're not aware of, such as this, that we, we need to put in our budget coming up?
That are reclass?
Yeah, is there any other, is there any other levels of, you know, same similar situation, you get to a three, you can't get to a four, everybody else has got a four except for Caldwell County?
We would have to both of them, I guess, look at some of the different positions, but that would be based within those two different departments, but there are some classifications. I think we, we went by the study.
You guys don't mind if I chime in just for a minute?
No.
We, one of the things we're looking at in next year's budget, and we haven't really had a chance to talk to you guys yet about the budget, and I really don't know where we're at yet because I don't have the final numbers from the tax collector and all that, but, but assuming we're able to do it financially, one of the things we'd like to look at is doing another salary study. And I know that kind of causes some trepidation because the last one's so expensive, but the thought process here is if we do it every three years, then it won't be that expensive because you won't have ten, twelve years or, or longer of catch-up to do. And one of the reasons we want to do that goes into what you just said, is that, you know, are there other positions that are like this? Well, probably, but, I mean, I don't think it's possible for us to, to monitor all of them and know everything, that's kind of why you pay money for a professional firm to do those things. So that's something, you know, that, that kind of dovetails with what they're talking about, is if we can do that and get on a cycle. And in my mind, if we did it every three years or some counties will do one-third each year, but however it works, you get on a cycle and you keep this up to date going forward. And I think what you do, once you get on that cycle, you know, you kind of eliminate these things where people come in during that interim and say, I need to reclass. Well, I think at that point, if you're on a cycle, you say, well, if you do, they'll find it in the next study that we do. But anyway, I just, you asked that question, I felt like you needed to know, we're kind of looking at that, of course, it'll ultimately be up to you guys to decide. I did have one question, I noticed in the budget request that this information was in there for DSS and I was thinking the total cost was like seventy-five thousand a year. Is that some ones besides the thing you've described tonight or is that...
And I don't know the exact figure you're looking at, what you, when I give the figure, I give the county dollar piece.
Right.
Now, there's, yeah, that may be whatever that cost is and then you have your reimbursement and all of those types of things.
I think the county cost was thirty-nine, something like that.
And that, that's gonna be something else added in there, that's not that piece of it, so.
So this is a piece of that larger pie?
Yes, yes, yeah, that's a different piece, yes.
About nineteen of that thirty-nine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, and I don't really, I don't really have any opinion on the merits of this, I don't really know it well enough, but I just felt like you should know that piece of...
You answered my question.
Yeah, so, but yeah, and we, we're gonna meet with DSS Monday to talk about their budget request, I'm sure this will be a, a topic of that conversation for sure.
And we make a, just to clarify a valid point here, that state reimburses us for certain percentage of these positions too.
Right. Yeah, it...
Pretty high percentage.
Yeah, it's usually about half or maybe a little more, depending on it, it kind of, kind of varies depending on what the job is, but, but yeah, that's, that helps us because, you know, if you spend a hundred dollars, it only costs you fifty, so that's good.
All right, thank you, Tom.
Thanks.
So what do you need from us tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I think you need a motion.
To re, to do the reclassification?
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion that we reclassify the DSS, that we approve the DSS reclassification request that has been brought to us tonight.
From a sixty-nine to a seventy?
Sixty-nine to a seventy.
Effective when?
Now.
Not in thirty days?
Tonight.
In budget?
I mean, how was that, how would that work in payroll? You payroll gurus. We can't put new employees on till the first day of the month, so...
That's, that's what I would, I would ask, that we do it effective the first of the month and the first, first part of pay cycle.
The first day of May.
Yes, if we do that or within the...
Yeah, I don't know that we could get it in on this, this payroll for April, I don't...
You probably can't, I mean, they, they recognize that, we'd make it effective tonight so they can begin to work on it and it'd be effective on...
May first.
May first.
And I, I guess you're clear on who this affects and how much?
They would have to present, yeah, we, I think within that, what they've sent you in the budget shows some of that, so.
But it's not everything you asked for in the budget, it's just a portion of it, so I guess we...
We'll break that out.
Yeah, we'd need that data from you.
Yep.
So you guys good with that? We make it effective tonight, but you mean it'd be effective May first, so y'all get to work on it?
And, and our finance folks are good with that, I mean, I, I just want to make sure. I know a lot of times we try to put something in play, middle of the year, you know, then it doesn't happen, then people get frustrated, come back to us, then you're back in there asking us to catch up something. I mean, is...
He's right.
May one too good, too close?
He's right.
Does it need to be June one or do we just need to say July one in the new budget year?
Right.
Help us to understand.
This first, I think it goes back to that first question that you asked me, do I have any others? I don't have any other reclassifications or classifications to be added that I'm aware of. There could be some requests to reclass some positions, but there are no requests to add a new classification, so we wouldn't have to come back and do this.
Right.
At the budget or in July, so there wouldn't be any of that. So if you do it tonight, it's...
That's it, done.
Yeah, there, there are multiple requests for reclasses in the budget, but they're not creating a new pay grade like this would be. And as far as administratively, I mean, I think we can handle it for the May payroll. You know, ideally, I like to make everything in the budget when we're this close to the budget rather than, you know, piecemeal, but...
It's always a big ship to turn and a lot of people don't realize.
Right, right.
How big county government is to turn.
Definitely, but...
You're talking about how many positions potentially?
Thirteen.
Worst case, thirteen positions.
Right.
Which may not even have that many, right?
It would definitely be thirteen.
Okay, so thirteen, so you're only talking about thirteen positions here, we're not, we're not trying to turn, but...
Well, just to answer the question, yeah, we can handle the administrative part of that if you decide to do it.
Okay. So it would, would go into effect May one. We're approving it tonight for May one, is everybody clear with that?
Yeah.
Is everybody good with that?
I'm good with that.
You good, Commissioner Brant?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay. You guys? All right, so with that, I'll call the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed and there is none. And, and we appreciate you folks bringing it to us and I will just caveat into that, I would like to say that typically, we don't do these kind of things this close to the budget year and I, and I know that it was some conversation between myself and staff, so, and we appreciate it, we try, we know we're trying to retain some folks to keep them from leaving. But, but I will say, and I want to say this, I don't know why they'd want to leave if they're working for the two greatest administrators, the best county government.
I think that's what we tell them, but, you know...
You know?
We're perplexed by that as well.
Sometimes money is not everything, folks. I know it makes a big difference, but hopefully they will stay.
I hope so.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
With that, we will move to our consent agenda this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have for you a budget transfer of vehicle purchases, previously approved unused funds from environmental health restructuring plan of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Budget transfer of the Health Department digital sign purchase for health and human services building, its COVID-19 funds of fifty-eight thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollars. We ask for your approval of JCPC County Funding Plan and appointment of Assistant DA Stephanie Renselman to the JCPC Board. A budget revision for the Board of Elections, the transfer of twenty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars of unused ballot purchase funds to help purchase a DS four fifty high-speed tabulator. The balance of the funding for this purchase will come from the HAVA grant funds and equipment trade-in, the asset trade-in sheet attached is fifty-four thousand four forty-two. Budget revision for the Health Department of seventy-five hundred and twenty-two dollars for funds received from the Food Protection and Facilities Branch. Another budget revision, convert three agency funds, fines and forfeitures, ROD fees, grant revenue to a special revenue fund in order to comply with new GASB eighty-four requirements. This has no impact on the bottom line, no changes to how the money is used, this is eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Budget revision, increase the line items necessary to allow the school system portions, portion of sales tax to flow through the county's books. Sales tax revenue is higher than anticipated, no impact to the general fund, three hundred thousand dollars. Budget revision for the Department of Social Services, increase county budget appropriation for the low-income energy assistant program funds for an additional state allocation as of March the eleventh of this year. No county participation required, that's twenty-six thousand dollars. We ask for your approval of a letter of support for the annual scream half marathon to be held July the tenth, twenty twenty-one in Caldwell County. We ask for your approval of the proclamation designating April two thousand twenty-one as North Carolina eight-one-one safe digging month. Approval of a budget transfer for the Sheriff's Department, purchase a drone to be used in investigations, this would be eleven thousand dollars. And we ask for your appointment of Dorothy Little to the Caldwell County Council on Agent.
All right, and hearing the recommendation of the county manager, was the pleasure of the board in adopting this evening's consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's consent, consent agenda as the county manager has provided.
All right, any other discussion or comment? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously and with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this evening.
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you again for being here.